And general fund dollars are spent on the police and fire protection for residents, businesses. Once again, looking at the general fund, going back to 2012, $668 per resident goes back to close to the 2003 level of what we've spent per resident. Some of the expenditure highlights, and lowlights maybe. Expenditures reflect the city priorities. Total general fund budget is down 5.6 percent. Required funding for our other post employment benefits are funded within the budget. Once again, reduction of 36 of the 47 full-time positions are in the general fund. Personal services as a percentage of the budget continued to decline from 72.2 percent, 2010 to 68.2 percent, 2012. There's no longer a community center subsidy, but we still have a community center, but there's no longer a subsidy to that operation. And also paints a closure of the library, museum, and nature center. General fund expenditures by object. We break ours down into three main objects: personal services, supplies, and other service and charges. And once again, you can see that the personal services continues to decline over the last three years. And for the current year budget, wages alone were $3.5 million less than the current year Once again, by object and percentage, personal services is 68 percent of our general fund budget. It's down, it was 71 percent in the current year. Supplies stayed the same at 4 percent. And other service and charges is 28 percent. That went up from 25 percent. Taking again, taking a look at the total budget again, personal services went down in total $3.7 million. It's wages and fringes are 8.9 percent from the current year budget. Supplies are down $446,000, 17.5 percent. And other service and charges are up $850,000, or 5.9 percent. I'll talk a little bit about each of those areas to give you reasons why. But in total, once again, the general fund budget is down 5.6 percent from the current year. This is a listing of our collective bargaining agreements and the various unions the city has. We have six union groups. We are in current negotiations with AFME, MAP, TCSA, and formally with the TCOA and TPOA. We do have a settled contract with the fire, the fire officers, staff officers. Taking a look at the supplies, some of the major categories and the major line items that went down. Once again, supplies were down $446,000, 17 and a half percent. Office supplies went down $64,000, or 31 percent. Basically, reduction in departments, the library, recreation, and more use of technology and paperless through all of departments. Operating supplies are down $210,000, roughly, or 19 percent. Once again, that's directly related to parks, the community center, nature center, library, museum, reduction in our supplies for those departments. And repairs and maintenance supplies is down $132,000, or 16.3 percent. Once again, also reductions in fire halls, library, and also that's where the salt would come in for the county roads as a part of that budget to repair and make an operating supplies, maintenance supplies. So since we're no longer going to be purchasing salt and so forth for the county roads, yeah, those expenditures came down. Looking at other service and charges, this one up $850,000, or 5.9 percent. Computer services, even though you see a lot of red there, the main one, I'll talk about contractual services, but computer services went down $361,000, or 28 and a half percent, mainly due to the library. They have quite a few computers there that we maintain. And also the staffing reductions throughout the city. They've, the computer services are down by that amount. Contractual services are up about $1.8 million, or 50 percent. As you'll notice throughout a lot of these budgets, in public works, in parks, a lot of the seasonal employees are gone, a reduction in full-time employees in all those areas too, which a lot of it's made up of privatization or contracts that are going to have to be needed to provide a lot of that service. And one of the larger pieces of that is the building inspection with SafeBuild. Last year, that was, the budget had wages and so forth, and SafeBuild is now a contractual service amount for us, and that was $1.1 million of that, 1.8 million. The others are scattered out through all the various parks, maintenance, streets, drains, surface maintenance, and so forth. Printing and publishing, down about $96,000, 34 percent. We continue to reduce the cost of Troy today. And also, there's election supplies and so forth that we don't have in there, and also some recreation charges that have been cut back. Rentals are down $122,000, or 4.7 percent. A lot of it's through parks programs, senior programs, and motor vehicle rental gets charged to that with the reduction of those vehicles and employees and so forth. There's lesser motor vehicle charges. Community group contributions. We reduced our total community group funding by $112,410. And basically, the only group, community group that will receive funding is Troy Medigo of $190,000, and that's a pass-through of smart funding credits that we received from Smart Transportation Authority. Those are passed along. We were working on phasing the other groups out. Last year, they mostly took a 50 percent reduction. And this year, there's no funding for any other group in the budget for next year, with the exception of Troy Medigo. The Recreation Division Challenge, that's quite a few years ago, there was, in 2002, there was a subsidy of $1.7 million for recreation programming. And when the community center came online, there was always a million dollar subsidy for the community center. So about $2.7 million. Council said, well, if we keep that, we want to keep that. We don't want to, even with our larger community center and so forth, we do not want to contribute or have a subsidy of more than a million dollars for that. And all the other recreation programming, we had a subsidy of about $1.7 million for recreation programs. As you can see, 2000, or 630,09, and 10 are actual numbers. You can see each year, they reduced the overall, revenues under expenditures have come down, and basically, less of a subsidy. So, for example, there's a subsidy savings in 630,09 of $135,000, June 30, 10, $840,000. Estimated for this year, about a $1.3 million savings. So they're basically using 1.4 of the 2.7 million that was allocated for both those functions. And next year, for 1112 budget, that goes down to about, just a little over a million dollars, revenues that are under expenditures, and a subsidy savings of a $1.7 million. So they are working their way down to that, and each year, they've made progress, and we'll show the community center in the next slide. But 2011, 12 is basically $355,000 improvement over the current years. As the community center goes, and their $1 million subsidy, they've also improved each year, and the community center is at a breakeven position right now, even with the scale-back programming and so forth, and expenditures for 2011, 12, and actually about $3,000 to the good that things come out as projected. So they have met, and the community center will remain open. If that word out there, it is going to stay open. Their goal and their target is to meet their revenues, expenditures. And they are projected for that for next year, and you can see they made improvement each of those years. So they made up a million dollars, basically, in reduction expenditures and some improvements. Okay, that kind of, any questions on the expenditure side for the general fund?
I do. Does the expenditure on the police department side in this budget show, put back on the four officers that was recommended by the SMA or not?
No, it's not. There's no cut, in the current year's budget, there is some reduction in the police department, but there are no police officer reductions. The next, that'll appear in the two, next year, 2012, 13.
The next one.
There's five, I think there's five positions, but they're not police. There's a couple service aides and some other positions.
So we're going to talk about that during the, when we talk about the three-year budget?
Three-year budget.
Okay, right.
There's not, the, there were no cuts in this year for police, or they weren't put back in, but we're looking, our earlier discussion, I think, was on overlooking over the, when we started cutting those, if we wanted to reduce or put back the four. In the three-year, they are not put back in the three-year budget.
Okay. Any others? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have a question. Also, there are talks of concessions, but that's not factored into the budget at all for any of the labor unions or the employee groups until it's confirmed, right?
Yes and no.
I need some clarification, because I know we've kind of talked about that.
We have classified exempt, which we have in place, that those are reflected in the budget, the 10 percent that is reflected in next year's budget. The fire staff officers, their 10 percent or plus is factored in, that's already taken out of next year's budget. We do have factored in any groups that are not 312 eligible, we do have portions of those factored in, probably, or almost half or so of what we think will be resulting from those groups that aren't 312 eligible. I didn't want to, 312, I don't want to F come, I'm not going to put in something there and say, oh, by the way, council, I need to, really, I got to put a million dollars back into the budget because, you know, we're in arbitration, or whatever else, we didn't get that savings or whatever. So, those are not in there. But the other non-arbitration, 312 arbitration, a pretty good portion of it is factored into next year's budget. Because we know we could, we're very close, and we should be able to settle those shortly.
Councilwoman Curling?
Okay, we have many part of negotiations.
Well, clearly, we appreciate the work that's been going on on this. I guess there is a certain amount of frustration, though, because it was a year ago that we sat around the table and said that there was a desire to keep some of the young officers, that there would be a way to do that. And the thought was, and it was mentioned by the manager, that perhaps an early retirement incentive would do that. And then that was extended to others, and we've seen that many of the others have come up with that. But I guess I'm surprised and frustrated that it has taken so long, and that we're at this point, not knowing where we'll be with that, even the, and I guess it's to the manager, even to the point of not knowing who's really going to accept the early retirement incentive. Usually, when, when I've seen it done, it's just a short window. But the window now is June, or, you know, that's, that's long, when, at this time, we're trying to figure out the way the numbers go. So I just have frustration with that.
I can respond to that partially. Different employee groups have a different comfort zone in terms of trying to reach an agreement. With the fire department, Chief Nelson, how long did it take us?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks. And the fire department has always been a couple weeks. One time, it was a couple cups of coffee, if I recall, a few years back. And we're trying to get that comfort zone. The time to ink a deal is out of our hands. We have to get concurrence from both sides, obviously. I believe that I'll have something for an executive session for our May 9 meeting on the negotiations. And we can talk at that time, give you a full update on what's going on and the nuances for each employee. Be happy to do that.
I guess that's why I sense Mr. Lamarrato saying, well, yes and no, because we're really trying to figure out ways to do different things in the community in terms of the big budget, but the numbers matter, right?
That's correct. To show how much, we say it's a constantly changing budget, and it does change, I could say it almost changes daily, the things that happen all of a sudden, but we don't, we won't know for the classified exempt group. We have, I think, right now, 21 people have taken the retirement incentive that have been approved by the retirement board. They have until near the end of May, which our budget will be adopted by that, they have it until the end of May, and I think there's still several people out there that may take advantage of that, too. So, the budget is a moving target, but we're trying to estimate on what we have in place now, or checked out. I can't go on by F comes if it's going to happen or not, or I could go by no impact.
Absolutely, I agree. I just think that ideally, it would have been better to close it off, regardless of whatever the comfort level was. We need to know. That's, that's ideally how it would have worked. I do have one additional question, and that is, although you put Troy Youth Assistance, Avondale is a youth assistance as well. Would that be in the same category? It means ruled out.
Anybody else on this section before we go to special revenue funds? Okay.
Okay. Next set of funds, we'll take a look at our special revenue fund. We'll cover these next three tonight. Special revenue funds, we have the Community Development Block Grant Fund, local streets, major streets, budget stabilization, refuse and recycling. These are all classified as special revenue funds, which means that they account for specific revenue that's legally restricted for expenditures for that particular purpose. You cannot take refuse dollars and transfer to the general fund and so forth, or block grant money, which is federal funding. You can't say, well, let's transfer that somewhere else. It has to be used for those purposes. Same thing with local streets and major streets. Block Grant Fund, we're, 2012, going to get about $174,000 in revenue. Council already had their public hearing on this late November, December. And we've allocated the funds, 52,000, 190 for the home chore program, about $35,000 for administration, about $87,000 for the Section 36 park improvements. Local Street Fund, we received this revenue from the gas and weight tax from the state of Michigan, about $1.3 million. This revenue's been fairly flat over the last several years. We're also using as part of revenue, it's some transferring from the Major Street Fund, about $224,000, and some of the fund balance of local streets, about $130,000, to come up with about $1.7 million in expenditures. That gets transferred to the general fund. We have 265 miles of local streets. This pays for all the signage, drainage, and snow and ice control, surface maintenance, sweeping, those type of things, other than main construction. Those are handled with those funds. The gas and weight tax generated from, for local streets is not enough to cover our local street maintenance, and that's why we have to transfer some money, and we're permitted to transfer money from our Major Street Fund, and we're transferring $224,000 into that. Major Street Fund receives over $3 million in gas and weight tax revenue, and so, about a total revenue source of $3,670,000. Expenditures, 1.7 million is for maintenance of 57 miles of major roads. That's, once again, surface maintenance, snow removal, signage, sweeping, and so forth. In addition, we transfer $224,000 to local roads, and $1.1 million to the capital fund for capital construction projects on major roads. Take a look at Act 51 or the gas and weight revenue. This is what's basically happening to this funding source for major and local roads. You can see, once again, from the high point in 2004, for major roads, we received $3.8 million a year. It's down to just around a little over $3 million right now for 2012. That source has gone down. Local roads have stayed fairly steady since that period of time, is $1.5 million, 2004, and it's $1.3 million 2012. This revenue is per gallon tax, and that has decreased every year, once again, due to higher gas prices, especially now, will probably even have more effect on this. Higher gas prices, loss of population, and also more fuel-efficient vehicles have cut this revenue source down. It's a price per, it's not a percentage, it's a price per gallon, and as your usage goes down, this revenue source suffers. They've been looking, trying to look at ways to keep removing the sunsetting on this, to look at different ways to fund whole state of Michigan, all the roads, you know, all the road programs, from the county to state, city, but this source of revenue is going on, is going to continue to go down, gas over $4 a gallon or so, it's going to even be more, probably more, maybe be less than that for next year, strictly based on the gallons Budget stabilization fund was established back in 2003. After we transfer $300,000, we'll have a balance of about $1.2 million left in this fund. $300,000 is planned on being allocated for the next three years to assist the general fund during these difficult times. And any interest earnings on this fund is also transferred back to the general fund. Refuse and recycling, the revenue there is, with our decreased taxable value, though, we are looking at a .96 mils, which is a .09 mil increase from the current year to provide $4,140,000 in tax revenue. Total revenue is about $4.2 million. On the expenditure side, for all our contractor service, which is curbside disposal fees and refuse collection, those all have gone up about 2.2 percent next year. That's based on a CPI adjustment and a fuel adjustment. And as fuel prices go up, those will continue to go up, too, but right now, we're estimating about a 2.2 percent increase overall in that area. On the other, recycling and other refuse expenses, we've actually reduced that expenditure by 29 percent from the current year. We've eliminated, a reduction in personnel, where we've had one person in the public works coordinator is now taking over, also the solid waste coordination efforts and overseeing that area. So we're able to reduce those expenditures by 29 percent. The overall budget only went up 0.8 percent, but there is a need, once again, because of the reduction in taxable value, to increase that millage rate by .09 mils. The average residential household will pay $93 a year for refuse recycling and compost services. That's up, it'll be up $4 in the current year. Taking a look at the fund balance, this is a self-funding entity, it stands alone, so they only, the revenues and expenditures related to this fund is how they get their fund balance, their fund balance is getting very low. We're estimating at June 30, 2011, it'll be about $108,000 for this fund. If we, the concern we have going forward is that if our expenditures come in over revenues, we'll have a deficit in this fund, and reported to the state of Michigan as having a fund in that deficit position. Right now, we're, you know, we're estimating, it's very close, so we have $108,000 estimated to be remaining, and we're not using any fund balance to balance the fund, but it does require a .09 mil increase. Taking a look at their refuse millage rate history, 2011, 12 rate is roughly the same as it was back in 1997, 1998. Still under what it was, the all-time high about 1.20 in '95, '96. Next slide shows the average, what the average residential refuse property taxes, $93. That's with a .09 mil increase, about a $4 increase for the average residential home for refuse taxes. And we call today, when you check with, like Rochester Hills, for example, it has all private, it's a privatized pickup, where the residents have to make their own arrangements, the average residential home probably pays about $200 a year for that service. Where residents here pay around $93. Any questions on the special revenue funds? Next, we'll move to our internal service funds. We have our building operations, information technology, fleet maintenance, compensated absences, unemployment, and workers' compensation. Internal service funds are used to account for financing of goods and services provided by one department to other departments, mainly on a cost reimbursement basis. Building Operations Fund, provide building maintenance service to all our city buildings. This budget is down 26 percent from the current year budget. We have a reduction of three building maintenance specialist positions through attrition in this department. And to look at their cost per square footage, it's $1.84 per square foot, arrive to service, which is very low. And of course, the workload, to relate to those three positions, we, we're factoring in our option-one plan, is that what's workload has been reduced by the closing, once again, the library, museum, and nature center. I'll mention it now, but we'll, as we talk about the library and those other, I'll mention it now, just because not only the building ops, but also the information technology fund, you'll see some major reductions in those departments' budgets, and personnel reductions and so forth. If the library or whatever else is added back on, those factors we have to include in their budget, the library budget, which will mean that maybe we might have to replace some of these, or put back some of the positions and these other ones, which will be funded by the library, or else of the general fund, but we'll have to, it may result in putting back some of those positions. We get into that discussion. Information technology, other revenues generated by charges departments based on the number of computers assigned to their department. Right now, we're, they're servicing 366 computers. It's down from 481 in the current year budget, mainly due to the library closing of over 100 and some computers over in that area. They have a reduction of one computer specialist position who basically supports those computers and so forth. We have a reduction of one employee reflected in their budget. Capital expenditures for expenses for next year are about $84,000 for a BSNA software upgrades for our building, tax and assessing of software packages we have. This is an updated database, gives us better reporting tools, more user control and interfaces and so forth, and streamlines the whole process there, and makes it more efficient, the operation of those programs in those areas. Fleet Maintenance Fund, rental charges for city-owned vehicles and equipment to all departments, and outside customers generates a revenue that covers the operations, replacements, fueling, maintenance, insurance, and so forth of all the equipment. Currently, we're estimating about $157,000 from outside users, and that list is growing, though, as we speak. They have a reduction of one equipment serviceman due to some internal equipment reduction usage, elimination of some of the public works and parks employees and so forth, and building ops and so forth, that we've reduced their positions by one full-time position. Still being able to maintain and try to create some outside revenue. Compensated Absences Fund, this accounts for sickification accruals for all funds of the city. It's a separate fund to account for these liabilities, so all our funds do not have to account for those separately. If you didn't have one, we operate as an internal service fund, a lot of cities do it this way. Otherwise, you'd have to have, every fund would have to have a liability, a sickification liability set up in each of the funds. We accrue it all here, comfort, accrue all the liabilities in this one fund, and as they're used, they get paid out of this fund. This fund is down significantly, almost a million dollars, due to reduction of full-time Unemployment Insurance Fund, we're a member of the Michigan Municipal League, self-insurance pool for unemployments. You can imagine, with layoffs comes increased costs for unemployment insurance. That's gone up about a little over $100,000 from the current year to cover those expenditures. Brokers Compensation Fund, we're also with the Michigan Municipal League on this, a self-insured pool. We're showing expenditures going down quite a bit in this fund, and even though we may have, it may be a little low here, because we're, we're making our new rates, and our experience modification has gone up, because we have had some, a few more serious accidents we've had in the past. We had, last year, we had the lowest modification factor. This year, it's gone up quite a bit from that area. So we'll see, this number may be a little low, but we'll have to, we don't have the final numbers yet. Any questions on the internal service funds? Any questions on the internal service funds?
That's my phone.
Let's go back to page 40, the compensated absences fund, explain that a little better. Is that 3.5, 3.325 million for 2014? Is that for sick and vacation pay that's accrued? Is there anything else other than sick and vacation pay?
I don't believe so. Sick and vacation, all, all funds, water fund, motor pool, every fund of the city, general fund, everyone.
Sick and vacation.
Yeah.
Okay, next part.
Okay, the last set of funds we'll look at are our debt service funds. As you know, we continually review our outstanding debt and we try to determine if refunding or reissuing the debt will bring a savings to the city. We've had past refunds that have saved, will be saving the city over $1 million over the life of these bonds by refinancing and refunding those issues. Our proposed mileage rate for a general debt service fund is still at .50 mils. That will service our proposal A, B, and C bonds that were voter-approved back in 1999. We'll talk a little about the general debt service fund in 2000. Motor transportation fund bonds, proposal A, B, and C, and scheduled principal interest in all funds and projected mileage rate requirements. Debt service fund, once again, a .50 mils will generate almost $2.2 million. We are using about 954,000 of their fund balance to come up with enough funds to pay off our proposal A, B, and C bonds. This will leave after 954, this is a known reduction because it's, we know what the principal and interest payments are. That will leave a fund balance of about $1.6 million in this fund. And I'll show you how it's over three years, what happens to that shortly. 2000, Michigan transportation fund bond for the Rochester and Big Beaver Road section. This is funded by the DDA, Downtown Development Authority, and they'll have about 675,000 outstanding in debt. Final maturity in 2014. Proposal A bond is for, was for our street bonds, the original issue amount was $11 million. We have about $7.4 million outstanding, and the final maturity on these bonds is in 2021. Proposal B bond, public safety bonds, original issue amount of $18 million. That's for our fire and police training center, police and fire administrative building addition and fire station number three. We have about $10.9 million outstanding, final maturity, once again, in 2021. And proposal C, recreation facilities, is an $18 million original issue amount. 12 million for the community center and park land acquisition of 6 million. We have about 5.9 million outstanding, the final maturity is in 2021. Next slide projects out, based on our current taxable value projections, what mileage rate is going to be necessary to fund our debt service? And we'll be able to maintain our .50 mils through 2013. And at that point, 2014 will require a .67 mils or 1, or a .17 mil increase. When we issued these bonds back in 99 and 2000, 2001, so forth, we had a .75 mileage rate that was for debt service, and we said we were not going to go over that amount of money in that. We only needed at the time about .50 mils would have carried us through with the fund balance we had in there, would have carried us through, not knowing about 13 years later what would happen to the whole taxable value market here. So what's going to happen is that, what happened, when we went from 75 to .50, we took that .25 mils and put it into our capital fund at that time. We kept the same mileage rate, we took it out of debt service and put it into our capital fund and added to that, knowing that if we needed that money to cover our debt service, that we would have to capture back out of capital. So you're going to see in 2014, we're going to need to capture about 17 cents out of the capital fund to put it back into our debt service fund to carry that. Our debts, our fund balance will be used up by that time. And we get over that, right now, based on projections, 2015 or so, we get a little above that, 75.75 mils. So we'll see as the taxable value, as we move forward with this. But we're going to, we can't go over the .75 mils, so it's going to have to come probably from the capital fund or wherever to make up that difference. And you'll see in our three-year budget discussion what that kind of does to our capital fund down the road for road improvements and other projects. If you have to start using that, those funds to pay for the debt service. That covers it. Any questions on the debt service funds? We have scheduled for May 2nd, next Monday, enterprise funds, capital projects in our three-year budget. And we have May 9th to wrap up, and then May 16th is the public hearing and adoption.
And we should explain for those that don't know, the May 9th wrap-up is from 6:00 to 8:00. And the regular council meeting starts at 8:30 that night. Yes, Jeff, Mr. Zerlay?
Yes, it's my understanding that in the wrap-up, it will also be disposition of the library. We talked about that early on in our session today, so we'll include that as well.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's very important to have the whole, two nights anyways, to look at the three-year budget and what that's looking like before we get into any libel discussions.
Right, right. Counselor, how about?
Not directly related to the debt service fund, but the Sanctuary Lake Ball Fund with respect to the revenue bonds there. There, is there a fund that is lending, is there an interfund balance between Sanctuary Lake Golf or Transfer, I should say, to cover those bonds in this year? And if so, what fund would be lending that enterprise fund of money to cover those bonds?
It'll either be either Sylvan, Sylvan Glenn, by combining those two, or general fund in this interfund transfer. We'll talk, we'll cover the Sanctuary Lake next meeting there, and there's improvement in that area already projected by Billy Casper. Slight, but there is some improvement. We're going the right direction there, so.
Any others? Okay, there's no more questions from counsel. We have a public comment section here, Mr. Zerlay?
When would it be appropriate for the council to decide if you wish to have Mr. Ed Star, Colas of Target Insight, come to visit you? There was an email that I had sent through, Beth Cash, Nicholas States.
You need a resolution to set a meeting, is that right?
I, I don't know. I just need a date.
Oh, okay. I think we have it here. Yes?
Yes.
Director Chant, confirm?
The only date I cannot make is the nighttime date of Thursday, May 12, 7 to 10. If they were different night, otherwise I can make any time, any other date, but I have a commitment Thursday, May 12.
I would like to suggest either Wednesday, May 4th from 1:00 to 4:00, or Thursday, May 5th from 1:00 to 4:00. Is it going to take three hours?
Two and a half.
Okay. All right. Anybody have a problem with either one of those dates or a preference for either one of those?
I would have to say the 5th, I guess.
The 5th is better for you?
Yes. Definitely not at 12, at 1.
We may not have 100%. Some people might have work commitments or other commitments, so, I mean, because this is added on to all those other meetings. So Thursday, May 5th from 1:00 to 4:00. Councilman McGinnis, is that better for you? Thursday or Wednesday, which is better?
Definitely not Wednesday.
Okay, Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00.
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay. Don't we need a resolution?
We can't make a resolution, this is a special meeting, but you can call it as a special.
Okay, then I can, okay. Then I have to call it as a special meeting and send the papers, okay?
I can get that.
At least we get the 5th, and then we'll see. I mean, I know some people have work commitments and, well, it's a daytime thing, but, okay. Any others? Counselor, how about?
So the agenda is just to delve into that in more detail, is that the idea?
Yes. Any questions that we'd had from him or things? Because, you know, you had expressed interest in talking to him some more, and several others had too, so. He's allotted some time. Yes, Mr. Zerlay?
I brought him back to staff meetings the next morning. And it was very instructive for staff to engage, if you will, in a one-on-one conversation with them. I thought the same would be of benefit to the council as well. And I think it was Councilman Arlack had mentioned that possibility as well, just spelled remain by talking with the consultant.
Okay. All right, then we'll take some public comment if there are any. Is anyone who wants to comment at this time? Let me see which one. We'll start.
Well, thanks, Jeff.
Here. You want to go to the mic over there? I know there are mics around the room, but it picks up better to go to the mic. Give us your name, Mr. Ashland.
Name, thank you. My name is David Ashland. You know, this process has been long, and I've commented on it many times. My comment tonight is that I think we have, we've established a budget process, a budget presentation that to me appears to be a freight train. You cannot get in the way of it because the whole mechanism of budgeting and the result is pretty well cast in concrete. We can talk about it, but we can't do too much about it. I hope I'm wrong about that. But when I looked at some of the numbers that were up here, $2, I think the number was $2, I didn't have the handout, but I think the number was $2 in per resident taxes go to the library. And the, and the tax rate per resident is prob, I don't know, maybe it's $1,500. I don't know what it is per resident. Maybe it's $1,000. But that number is so very low. And when I think about how we could do this budget process, I think about, if the city in a given year had $100 of revenue that it could spend, and the next year it only had 85, it seemed to me that every department could have taken a proportional hit. Because the city is a body. It has arms and legs and heads and brains and hearts, and the body needs all the parts. We've chosen in the city to just slice some parts off completely. I think about a year ago, I said, I think we were, or months ago, I said, I think we were doing this because it was the easy way to go. And everybody said, no, it wasn't easy, it was very difficult. But it's much easier than working through a complex method of allocating the pain to every portion of the city body. And we still haven't done that. I hope we can renew, restore parts of this body that at this point looks like they're going to be chopped off because the city needs it all, including the library. I don't want to sound like a one-subject freight train on the library here. I'm my own freight train with the library, but I'm butting up against a much bigger freight train, which is this established budget. This is basically the same review I heard months ago with some new numbers, but the process hasn't changed. The only other comment I make was all the good numbers that were presented about our comparison with other cities, we really failed in getting those numbers out to the public. We really failed, the council failed, in taking the steps necessary to make the public aware of all those numbers. Council fell flat on its face, and the public was deceived. But at this point, I guess my, my theme is, would be to keep every function in the city operating at some level. When I was in industry, I was given a number, next year, your budget's, your departmental budget is reduced 10%. Find a way to do it. Not because Charlie is so great, he's taking a 2% reduction, and then you're going to take a 30% reduction. Everybody suffers. I'm sure Kathy Ruus could run that library with some significant reduction, which would be much better than just chopping its head off. So without coming with a prepared statement, that's all I want to say tonight. I'm really disappointed in the whole budgeting process and how I think council's taken the easy way out by just eliminating some things to make the job a lot easier. I hope we can restore some of those things. Thank you.
Mr. Ashland. Mr. Peters, you wanted to speak?
Yeah. Hi, yeah, I'm Richard Peters. I seen a coyote yesterday or around across from my house. And I'm wondering the wisdom of cutting animal control here. If it's going to create a panic in the, in the community or whatnot, particular rabies, et cetera, stuff like that. Also, the, the amount of money that we spent for the old homes or the restoration projects of moving all these houses into the thing there, I have to wonder the wisdom of that, to be honest about it. I'm not sure, sure how well it's self, I wouldn't, I'm not a big believer in self-sufficient. I believe that if it promotes the public well-being, that people will accept it. And I'm not so sure that all them homes being clustered in that area really necessitates that cause. That's, those are two of the kind areas. And also, I'd like to, I don't know, if, or if there's a way to compute the empty space in our office buildings. Now, my ideas would be that we should become more international of a city. I think we should promote Troy not only in China, Japan, we should promote it in Brazil, we should promote it in India. We could come back with, maybe we have bankers coming in from China, or industry coming in from Japan, or we could have, you know, Brazil with their biology, their, their, all this information is out there for us to accede to. And I don't, you know, I think that we, as a city, should try to promote that. So that, that would be my, my view of it. Thank you.
Bruce, you wanted to speak next, Bruce, please go.
My backing, let me bend down that law. Question first, the ABC budgets, is that included in our mileage rate of 9%? The second comment, I'm appalled to hear the police chief describe the services are being cut by the police department. And I'll tell you for a fact, people sitting in this room, and I will say to the council meeting, 30 years ago, pick a number, somewhere in that range. I sat in a, in a meeting at Troy High School, orientation for parents for kids going into high school. I believe it was a police chief, but it was an officer, said, said 98% of kids in high school are using, are drinking alcohol. 90% of you sitting in the audience think that your kids are not. I was one of that, that 98% and I was wrong. That's bad enough then, but now, if you go to the Troy Coalition, Community Coalition or whatever it is that tracks this stuff, it's not, it's not alcohol anymore. It's drugs in more ways, shapes, and methods than my mind can conceive. And yet, here we are, a city, and we're going to reduce that particular, I'm not pointing at you, sir, or at this council. I'm pointing at us. We're going to take something like that, eliminate, how many lives are going to be ruined over the dollars that are involved in financing these things? And sir, I disagree a little bit with you. I don't see this problem as being a city council problem on not knowing. I think that's our problem, that's my problem. It's the people that aren't here tonight that don't pay attention to city council, are not interested, are too busy knocking down the buck to pay attention to their city.
Anyone else that wants to speak tonight? Audrey Zambroski?
Can I just stay here?
Well, Mrs. Stewart indicated that even though I thought when people spoke from there, we'd pick it up, but, oh, thank you.
Okay, on December 31st of 2010, the ending, but it's written on January 13th, 2011, page 48. What does, it says general government fund. In 2010, we spent over $500,000. Now, this is just- Now, this is just a rounding figure. But in 2011, it doubled over that, it doubled, 10,000, yeah, 10, well, it doubled anyway. And it said, this was used for other general government funds. What's the other general government fund? There's nothing under there to say. Nothing is ever itemized for people to understand, because people have asked me, what do the retired fire department, the people that volunteer, what do they get? I don't know what they get. I, I know they're retired firemen, I mean, when they retire, they get a pension, but people say, what is the amount? Everybody asks these kind of questions, what do we pay, like you say, refuge, you know, to pick up your recycling and all that stuff. No one ever has a rundown of anything, like in some places where they'll have it itemized. So you can understand better when it's itemized than you can just see numbers up there. You do a good job, John, I'll give you credit on that, you do a very good job. But the thing is that people don't, they'll see the figure and they'll go, what was that spent for? We don't know. It's just a figure that's being spent, and they don't know if that's really the right amount that should be spent, or that it should be less. And as far as the library goes, I have to say Kathy is one of the best directors we've had here, and she's done a great job, and she's really cut that library right down. And you have, I have to give her a lot of credit for being there, because I can't give any credit to the last one. I, in fact, I asked that he be fired, and someone said they can't do it, and so we wouldn't be putting him on a pension if it was. So, but that was my big question. If somebody says, what does other government fund mean? If you got government fund and you got other, what's other?
Thank you. Mr. Serly?
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we got two more people, okay. Mr. Beck?
Yes.
And then Mr. Burke.
The question I had at the last general meeting was, and Audrey brought it up, is the, on page 4-8, dated January 13th of 2011, and it says capital fund expenditures, other general government fund. It went from last year of $500,000 to $10,874,300. And I brought this up at the last meeting, and I haven't got any answers yet, and it's right here on page 4-8, and I'm willing to sit down with anybody from the administration or from the city manager's office to figure out what that, where they came up with that additional, almost $10 million. And the other, the other problem I have...
Oh.
If you want, I can, I think I can, I think I know what they're talking about. It's, is that in the capital, capital funds?
Correct.
That includes the transportation center, which is a federal grant money, 9.3 or 4 million of that is for the transportation center, just in next year's budget.
Well, that's fine, okay, just, then...
We'll cover capital, next, next meeting covers all the capital projects, we'll go into all those, but that's what that was for.
So that, that money came from the federal government for the transit center. Our next question is, since the city of Birmingham pulled out of the transit center, what is the pleasure of the council and this administration on continuing to try to capture the transit center by itself? By the city?
We haven't had that discussion yet, but anything else, Mr. Burke, before we call the next person? It's over here, Mr. Burke.
John Vert. Just one thing for the gentleman who thought that it was only $2 for the library, that's $2 for no library. That, that was not any library funded there, that was for a closed library. It's $2 per person. It's much more than that if we try and keep the library open, just, just as a clarification. I would like to ask a question of Mr. Lamorato, because Mary Kerwin tried to explain to this to me one time, and I got really confused about it, and I asked Councilman McGinnis and, and the mayor both about it later on, and I still am not straight on. When you were talking about the Headley and the 8.1, could you explain that to me one more time? I would like to understand that, because I understand that we're right near the top of that, and it's going to cause us some problems.
Sure, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the, our authorized, we have authorized millage rate, which is 8.10 because of the charter amendment in 2009.
8.1.
Don't finish.
We had, we had 10, 10 mils was our previous authorized millage rate. The charter amendment reduced it to 8.10 mils. How Headley could affect that in the future is a, which we probably aren't going to have that situation for a while, but if our taxable value, our assessed value goes up more than the rate of inflation citywide, then we have to roll back that 8.10 mils. That's our cap. We're at 8.10 mils, we're only loving 8.03 mils of that 8.10 mils. But it was through that charter amendment that brought it back to 8.10. That became our new authorized millage rate, and if our Headley affects the, if the value of the property rises more than the rate of inflation in the city, you have to ratchet down your authorized millage rate so you can only equal whatever the inflation rate is.
But I thought our millage rate was 9.5?
That's total, that's everything. 8.10 mils is for our general operating and general capital. General operating, general capital, which was, and the debt service is a separate voted millage, a refuse is a state authorized millage rate, and then the other two, I'll make up the 9.40.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you back here on, back up.